The whole time I've been here in five years, it's like, fish or cut bait? Is that what we're using? Okay, that's what we're using. Because really, there are so many benefits. Like she alluded to, there are 16 in Florida. We would be, you know, if we were to get the bronze as the lowest level, we would be the 17th. And people vacate and they go to places based on the marketing of the bicycle, the League of American Bicyclists. And so it would definitely bring people, and I, you know, the way that they have the program, it's very comprehensive as what we just saw. So it's not something you can, we've tried before, we didn't hit the mark, but you really have to go about it in a really global way. And I think our community is for it. I mean, I really think people like what they see. And maybe in the beginning, they thought, oh, well, it's just a waste of money, it's this and it's that. But now they're using it, and now they see the benefit, and they see the other people using it. And the more people that are out there being active, like when you go to Colorado, you know, you feel like such a slouch because everybody's out walking and bicycling and doing all those things. And I think when they see the people using the trails and outside, it makes for a more vibrant, active community. It's contagious. So I'm for it, too.
Healthy.
I like some of Mitchell's ideas if he thinks, like Nesbit Street, I ride that street a lot on my bike, you know, making the connection to the other side. So I support the ideas, and I really like it, and I think we should go for it.
Tom?
I fully support bicycles, more bicycles, more folks riding bicycles and putting them in a safer environment is extremely important. I don't know if pursuing a League of American Bicyclists designation is that important. But I do, I did hear the use of tax dollars to accomplish this program, that's a bit troubling. I think we need to look at where the funding would come from to make this all happen, which I would love to see happen.
Yes, Nancy?
Yes, I've been a bicycle advocate for quite a while now, as this team knows. And I did view the videos that Mitchell provided and support the recommendation and encourage us as we do prepare a plan to rethink some of the streets that we have. And I agree with Kim, using the right of way that's there to replan some streets. I mean, you look at Bell Harbor, you just can't put charros on there and make that a safe street. You're going to have to rethink that street if you're really going to make it safer. Because I've talked with a number of people that are bicyclists who feel like we really aren't a safe bicycling community, even though we try to promote it. We've got a lot of work to do, and I think this is a very good step to help us get there. And would love to see us get a bicycle-friendly community designation. I think, was it Sanibel also is a silver?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Well, we were thinking that a 2017 application in January, it can be summer and winter, would give us a 15-month timeline to accomplish what we decide to do. We were wondering if council would like the strategy of asking the city manager to ask staff to prepare a menu of possible projects for council to review individually and costs associated with that as we develop this plan. That would be a step that we would recommend to move forward is to, Mitchell gave some wonderful examples of things that we could do. But what if we actually had a menu of road projects? Some of them will be more expensive, some less expensive, and council could review them individually to see if they are things that they want to include in the master plan.
My thinking in terms of a master plan, we do need one. But it really needs to be looked at holistically.
Absolutely.
And I agree with Kim and Nancy that we really need to focus on the safety issue. But again, picking out one street here and one street here that's bicycle-friendly and then all the others in between aren't.
Right.
Is not, to my mind, a master plan. So some way to incorporate strategies that might, again, move maybe one street a little bit, but then other streets a little bit more, you know, whatever could possibly be done. I'm going to be anxious to hear your responses when we talk about the walkable cities, because I think there again, we have more recommendations and suggestions about, again, looking at our city holistically in terms of what we can make.
I think we can get as creative as we want, and we would welcome the opportunity to work with the city.
Thank you for the team, you know, taking the lead on another project. This is wonderful.
I do like her suggestion of, I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
Of, you know, recommending that Howard work and come up with a list of possible projects and how it would tie into the already existing pathways and MERTs that we have.
Yes, I was going to say it would help us prioritize as well as when the league provided the feedback back in 2011, I believe it might have been. Part of the recommendation, I was an evaluator at that evaluation, and part of the feedback was to establish a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly coordinator. It wasn't just bicycle coordinator. So Mitchell's position actually is bicycle and pedestrian-friendly coordinator.
Yes, Tom?
As we look into this, I would like us to look into at the same time how these different cities, or perhaps the 16 other cities in Florida have accomplished this, how they have financed this program. I'm thinking that many of them are public-private partnerships. And I think that we ought to look into how it's done and see if we can incorporate some of this thinking that has preceded us in different areas into what we would like to accomplish here.
Great idea. Along with what kind of economic impacts it might have made.
Yeah.
Yes, Rachel.
And don't forget, a lot of the projects that we already have, the MERTs and such, were not actual city at the lower in taxes, you know, they were built by DOT dollars and things like that. So, you know, we have used those resources, even our Harbor Walk, you know, we have FDOT dollars for that as well. So that should all be a part of it. I definitely agree.
Yeah, and Secretary Haddaway is very much an advocate for alternate transportation.
Yep, very good advocate for it. And actually, he was at our, the walkable communities symposium last week.
So are we fishing or are we cutting?
Are we going to have a motion?
We make a motion? We fish. Second.
I second.
And we're fishing on, to apply to the American Bicyclists Bicycle Friendly Communities status to the league for that status. Is that correct? Is that right?
Is there a cost to that? If there is, I'd like that cost identified in order to do that.
Well, it doesn't cause anything to apply.
Okay.
It takes staff time.
But it's staff time, and when you do, if we're really serious about it, we're going to have to do some things.
So there is going to be a commitment of?
Yes.
It's going to be a commitment, yes.
The shared leadership notion that we proposed is to reduce staff time. Last time, David Holston did the entire application. This time, we are saying that the other partners will do four of the five. We're only asking the city to be responsible for one E. I know it's an expensive one, engineering. The league has indicated that unless...
And enforcement.
Oh, and the Pontagorda Police Department is fully committed to enforcement. They're already doing most of what they need to do to succeed in their portion of the application. But we do know that this is going to take an investment, and we understand that you need a lot more data to decide exactly what to invest in. We get that. But we're hoping that you'll agree to at least move forward on this. And Team Pontagorda will fund the areas that we are responsible privately, the education and the encouragement. Those will all be things we'll raise private dollars for, not asking for city resources.
That's the continuation of a wonderful public-private partnership. Thank you.
It's a great partnership. It's a great partnership.
But I think the question is, is you have an application target here of January 2017. Is that the target that you want?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I heard a motion to move forward on the application for January 2017. There was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Lots of good luck.
Hey, thank you so much for the support. We're going to work hard.
Rockin' and rollin'. Okay, thank you. We're now going to move on to the update on the city's business development plan action items. And I believe, Howard, you have this?
Yeah, this will not be a PowerPoint presentation, so if the pension folks want to get set up, you can get set up. We adopted a business development plan as part of the last strategic plan. And just to give you a little status of where we are with it, the stakeholder involvement, we continue to work with the PG Chamber Business and Economic Development Working Group, as well as One Community, One Message, and Team Pontagorda, involving any kind of business development opportunities that may be out there. Marketing our city's assets, this past fiscal year, we worked with the County Economic Development Office, the Airport Authority, and Florida Southwestern State College with the whole Western Michigan University Initiative. While it has not culminated in them purchasing the Impact Building, and that's kind of in the background right now, at least the group is moving forward with working with Florida Southwestern State College and the airport to get the aviation program going, and then maybe get into some other endeavors after that. So at least one step at a time. We did set aside, or will be setting aside, land for the library once the county completes their review of the deed transfer, and that'll come back to you for approval at the former Henry Street property. And then we are also going to market that property, the rest of the space there, for development. Herald Court Center, when the CRA approved just in July, the leasing agent and the fact that we don't have to go in front of you anymore for leases, if all goes well, and I say if all goes well, we will be filled up very soon. Now, why do I say that? We already signed a lease with the Foot Landing to move from their current location to where Creative Circle is. So they're in there renovating now at their expense.
That's great.
We already signed a lease with the Pedelec Electric Bike folks to operate the former JRA bicycle area. They're in there fixing the place up right now. Our only cost there is we're going to help with the painting, repainting of the floor, which was in bad shape. The rest of it is on their dime. We sent a lease to the Chocolate folks for the current Foot Landing space. The letter of intent has both, has been signed, but until we get that lease signed, it's still pending. But that looks favorable, because once the Foot Landing people move, the Chocolate people have all intentions as soon as they sign the lease of going in there at their dime and renovating it for their operation. And we just, yesterday, initialled a letter of intent, we did anyways, we haven't got it back yet, from the real estate agency, Coldwell Banker, who want to move in the rest of the space. If they sign that, then we'll put the lease together and we're full.
And do you realize we made that decision in July?
Right.
That is three months that all of this has happened. So I am, I am so pleased, so delighted.
Now, we have negotiated those leases on our own within, I mean, we have guidelines. We have tweaked them, so.
Thank you.
We're not rigid.
Good job.
And you'll hear later about the, working with the Marketplace folks, former city Marketplace folks about the property there. Annexation, we did reduce the fees for annexation. Park Hill was completed, and Charlotte Memorial Gardens should be meeting this week, hopefully. Hopefully, they'll come in this weekend. We did get a draft annexation agreement from Walmart that staff is reviewing. There's all kinds of things in there, but we'll come back to you with what's in there. One Community, One Message continues to work to determine our target audience, and you'll be getting a marketing action plan first or second meeting in December.
Yes, you will. Working on it now.
They just visited Mount Dora, and so first or second meeting in December, you'll be getting one. The utility line extension along Piper Road North, you approved today. That's an economic development initiative. So we worked with the owner, property owner, along Piper Road North. Once the county completes that road, as part of that road construction, will be a new wastewater force made that will hopefully promote development in the Enterprise Charlotte Airport Park area. And we worked with Fisherman's Village to approve a land acquisition agreement, and they are well ahead on their reconstruction. So they're still finishing their due diligence on the title search, so we have not received their final payment. But, you know, when they finish, if it comes back favorable, we'll get that final payment. And Fisherman's Village does work with us as far as promoting the city through the distribution of brochures when it goes about the state.
Thank you.
So that gives you a little update. There are some other parts of the business development plan that we continue to progress on. This is not a once and done, put it on the shelf plan. We continue to work at it each year.
You know, we had prepared this last year with our, and so I was saying, well, what have we accomplished? And we have accomplished a great deal, so I thought maybe we all wanted to see and get that summarized.
Yes, just a question for Joan. Did Rick Tuss actually make an appointment yet? I'm going to get on him.
I spoke with Rick, and he's on board. He is fully on board.
Oh, he is fully on board. I talked to him on Monday, and he said he had three appointments he had to pick time this week to get in to see Joan.
Yeah, he said he was meeting with Joan. I guess you guys just didn't get together yet, but it's good. It's happening.
We've heard that before.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, now we'll move on to our general employee fire and police pension plans update. Thank you.
For the record, Dave Drury. This gentleman doesn't need any introduction. This is Patrick Donlin with Foster &amp; Foster. He's going to go over, he will discuss the liability, remaining liabilities and that type of thing, the actuary stuff. And back behind him will be Jack.
Evan?
With Bogdan Group. He's the investment advisor for the three plans. He will then discuss the investments, how they look, what their parameters are, their thought processes are, and how we are doing or not doing. So that's, they'll go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you remember Patrick.
Welcome. Hi.
Hi, Patrick.
Hello. Thank you for having me today, and I know you've had a long meeting already, so I'll try to be brief and just open it up in case anybody has any questions. But an actuary is a pretty exciting job, because all we do is numbers all day long. And so an actuary is someone who wanted to be an accountant but couldn't handle all the excitement. But we also use lots of probabilities, so it's somebody that brings a fake bomb on a plane just because there's less chance there's two bombs than one bomb, so. For the particular plans here, we developed the annual contribution requirements because you're not a defined contribution plan where the city puts in exactly 6% of pay every year. You're a defined benefit plan, so the benefits when people retire are based upon their salary and their service, so there's a lot of unknowns there. So what we do is we do a calculation of all the liabilities to determine an appropriate funding requirement for the city. We also do benefit calculations when people are retiring. But basically, you know, as far as a pension plan, you know, money goes in and money comes out, and you can't pay any more than what actually is in the plan. So the stuff that goes out are benefit payments to the retirees, and then the expenses, and the income is the contributions and the investment earnings. Well, if you reduce your expenses, then you can pay more benefits. So that's one thing that the pension plan tries to do, and your boards keep a good eye on their expenses. The second thing is contributions and earnings. Well, if you do it like social security, where you just take the money in and pay it out each year, then you have to pay more contributions because there's no investment earnings. But if you advance fund, where you pay ahead of time, you know, knowing that you're going to have these liabilities down the road, then you can pay less contributions with more investment earnings. So this is the ideal situation, where you're putting in small contributions and you're paying out good benefits for your retirees. But that's where we come in and we make all of our assumptions. So what we do first is we determine a value of all the future retirement benefits. And then we say, well, we have assets in the plan right now, and so that blue shaded line there is what has to be funded in the future. You know, we already have the red assets, we need to fund that blue in the future. And we kind of split it up into two pieces, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, and then the future normal costs. There's a lot of question lately about funded status, you know, how well-funded are these plans? And you hear lots of different numbers. And there are all legitimate, you know, lots of them are legitimate information. So what we did is for like the general employee plan, on the left-hand side there, you can see, this is as of 10/11/14, because we do evaluation every year as of October 1, and it's just, you're meeting right before we, you know, work on the 10/11/15 valuation. But as of 10/11/14, the market value of assets was $36,488. And then there's this actuarial accrued liability, and that's kind of like a measure of where we are towards the final goal of full retirement benefits when people retire. And then there's the present value of accrued benefits is if we terminated the plan and we just had to pay everybody everything they've earned right now, that would be the $37,407. So we're at 97.5% funded on that basis. But if we look ahead and we know that people are going to get salary increases and their benefits of retirement are going to be higher than they are right now, then we're at 87% funded ratio. But when I came in January of 2013, was the last time I came here and did a presentation, that middle row there, the funded ratio, that's more the traditional funded ratio, and that was at 72.4%. And now, two and a half years later, it's at 81.4%. So we did have a good two years in the market between 10/11/12 and 10/11/13, and then 10/11/14. But now, 10/11/15 wasn't as good. You know, we basically had just above 0% return for fiscal '15. So the numbers might go, those funded ratios might go down a little bit when we do the 10/11/15 valuation.
Yes, Tom?
Patrick, is anything changing, changed with regard to the smoothing component? Is that still the four years? Is that what you're doing now?
Well, you see the left-hand column there with the assets, that's what you're referring to, in that when we do the valuation report, we look at the assets and the liabilities to determine a funding requirement. Well, you're heavily invested in equities, you know, 60, 65% in stocks, so it's going to have a big fluctuation from year to year. And your example, like this year, we had a 0% return. The year before, we had like a 15% return. So the idea is we don't want the city's cost to go way up and way down each year. So we use a smoothing technique with the assets, and we use that four-year smoothing.
Four years, okay.
But, and so that's that actuarial value there of assets. That's what we use when we determine the funding. But the market value is now going to be used for accounting purposes. You know, when the city does their financial statements, their CAF for each year, in there, they're now going to have to put on the balance sheet a liability for the pension plan, and that's going to use the market value of assets. No smoothing at all.
Okay.
So that's, you know, a new thing this year. But we still maintain it for funding, because it's the best way to go, is to smooth it over a four-year period. Police, you can see, the present value of accrued benefits for that plan is $13 million, and the assets were $14 million. So that one, we're 108% funded on the accrued benefits. And Fire were 106.9% on the accrued benefits. So you can see on Fire, again, it's went from 65 to 84% funded over that two-year But for funding, we use the smoothing and we determine an appropriate funding requirement. And, you know, some places want to look at going into the Florida retirement system. So I just wanted to put these up here to show you that the funding requirements for the city, for the police plan, have dropped from 29.9% down to 21.6% over that two-year period. Fire went from 27 to 16. In general, I didn't show the percentages because it's a closed plan, so there are payroll drops every year. But the dollar amount, you can see, went down. But FRS there, special risk, is now at 22% for police and Fire. And police in this plan is at 21.6, and Fire is at 16. So you're doing well relative to the Florida retirement system.
Yes, Rachel.
And even with FRS, it's my understanding that that would be our percentage, but we have to hand them a whole plan, right? So we would have to make up some kind of difference cash-wise before we could even turn it over to them. Wouldn't there be some kind of cash involved with that?
Well, this would be the normal cost for the benefits that are accruing each year.
After that, right.
But you would have to, you would still have this unfunded liability here, say the 84% funded there for the Fire plan. We'd have $1.8 million in unfunded actuarial accrued liability, and that would still be need to taken care of.
Right.
So in addition to the FRS contribution, you would have a Pontagorda Fire contribution also. So that, you know, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Yes.
Until you get to 100% funded here in that middle row, then you would still have an additional on top of the FRS. Like I mentioned, the new GASB requirement is that we use market value of assets, and we use an accrued liability, and we determine a net pension liability. Now, this net pension liability and funded ratio have always been in the report. In your CAF, you've always put them in there as a footnote, you know, in your disclosures, but they've never been on your balance sheet. But now, effective 10/11/15, that we just came upon, now you have this net pension liability for each plan on your balance sheet. So it's going to be about $9.5 million there that's all of a sudden going to show up on your city's balance sheet. But every city in the country is in exactly the same boat, and they usually shoot to be at least 80% funded ratio. And the average of our plans, I think, is about 81% or something in Florida. So you can see that when the auditors and stuff look at your books, they're not going to be disappointed in this number. These numbers have always been there as an unfunded liability, but that's what you're going to have to show this year. One other new legislation locally, you know, statewide this year, dealt with the state monies for police and Fire, and it basically said that, there's always been all these arguments about how to handle the state monies, and they basically said if the union and the city can agree on how to handle it, then perfect, so be it. If not, then we're basically going to split the monies half and half.
That was with Fire that they agreed to?
Well, the Fire agreed to, you know, a structure, and that's what's going to be done going forward. So it's nice. And then the police contract is up 93016, and at that point, they'll have to do the same thing, or just default to this 50/50. So that was a short version, but does anybody have any questions about anything?
Question to us, Nancy? Going back to the gap requirement, how is this going to change your actuarial analysis? Does this number, the net pension liability, is greater, based on what I'm seeing here, than what you state that they are in your current assessment?
Well, we're going to, now the accounting for the plan and the funding are going to have some differences, and one of which we already mentioned is the asset smoothing. So for funding, we're not actually going to do anything different now that there's new accounting rules. The accounting is going to be what it is, and for funding, we're going to maintain the same funding methods and assumptions and everything that we always have. It won't change that.
I guess, but you're showing two different pension liabilities, and the... I guess, but you're showing two different pension liabilities and we need some consistency, I would think.
Well, in the private sector, they did the same thing probably 10 years ago where they, they put a separation between the accounting and the funding. And that's the way all private sector plans are done, where you have an accounting liability and then you have a funding liability. So they are going to be different.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
But the funding, you know, what we do is we develop an appropriate funding requirement to, to work towards that 100% funding. That's what we're doing each year. And so as the city makes the contributions, and whether you smooth or don't smooth, you're improving the funded status. So on the accounting side, which uses slightly different methods, you're still going to see the same relative, you know, improvement or, or disprovement.
I guess I'm anxious to see what the 2015 numbers look like. Yeah. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You kept this all, you kept this all awake.
It was exciting.
You kept this all awake.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jack Evitt from the Biden Group. And we serve as the investment consultant for the, for all three of the plans and plans. Okay. I know that's kind of small for you to see in the audience. Let me tell you what it says. This is our, sort of our disclaimer. And we generally do the, any kind of investment evaluation is done off the custodial statements. Those are the statements of records for all three plans. Because of when we needed to have this information to you, I actually went to the custodian and said, listen, can you give us sort of a pre-statement? So this information is based on that pre-statement that was given to us. It does vary slightly. I think there's accruals that are not included in this information that would be included in the final information. We use the final information actually for the reports that go to the board. So it's really just a timing issue, but I did want to make that disclosure at the beginning. There was also assets in the plans that don't price by this time of the quarter. All three plans have real estate exposure that's privately held. And so those investments generally go through an appraisal process and sometime around the 30th of the month, the first month of the quarter, we actually get values for those. So anything, any exposure that any plan had to real estate, and it varies between, I think, 4% and 9% or around 10% of plan assets is actually entered as a zero. So when we get those results, it should actually improve the results for all three plans slightly. So is that clear as mud?
Yes.
Sorry.
Keep going.
Okay. Just to give you an idea, as investment consultants, what we do is we help the boards with investment policy creation, investment manager selection, evaluation. I make recommendations to the effects of all three of those things on a quarterly basis. So I wanted to kind of set up the three different plans, the police, the fire, and the general employees. The asset allocation for each plan as it relates to different asset classes. Domestic equity, international equity. For those who don't know, equity is ownership stake in a company. We have domestic and global fixed income. Fixed income is essentially a loan that you're making with the expectation that you're going to get paid back interest over a period of time. And at some point, you're going to have return of principal as well. We have real estate. You all know what real estate is based on some of the conversations I've heard you have earlier this morning. It's not indifferent to that. This is more geographically diverse. It's a pool. It's not a single building. It's also, there's different property types, commercial, there's, there's apartment, there is no residential, there's no condos and things like that in this. And then a small amount of cash that we use to pay the bills for the plans. So when you look at the three different plans, you'll see these are all run by separate boards. And so there are some slight differences in the current asset allocation, different asset classes. Some of that has to do with board preference. Some of it has to do with certain amount of transition. And some of these things are actually scheduled to be reviewed by, by the board. For example, global fixed income, you don't see that in the general employees' plan, but they did have to make an adjustment to their investment policy to be able to allow things like that. And so that has been made. And so that is something that's, that's on the table going forward. But you can see what makes the plan generally go up when the market's good and down when the market is bad is the equity side of the portfolio. Fixed income is generally in place to provide stability, kind of a rainy day fund, high level of income stream, not a high level of appreciation. Real estate has been put in, in the plans really as a third asset class. It has some characteristics of both. It does have some inflation protection built into it with the ability to raise rents and things like that. But it also has a high level of income, actually a higher level of income than fixed income has over, over the shorter periods of time. And, and it's really put in place to, to really help to reduce the domestic fixed income category. So that's kind of the difference when you look at the plan returns. Plans that have more on the equity side go up faster when the market goes up. They go down faster when the market goes down. Those are generally higher, higher volatility types of investments. Yes?
Yes, Tom.
Jack, as we move forward in time with regard to the general employees' pension fund, do you anticipate encouraging them to move out of equities and more into fixed income? Is that?
Yes. And where that question is coming from.
What's the time period in your mind that we're going to see the results of that?
Okay. Well, so, so what Tom is referring to is the closing of the general employees' pension plan. And so what happens is at this point in time, there are no employees that are coming into the plan. So we still have the current level of employees that are in the plan and those employees are still making contributions and their benefits are still improving as they exist in the plan. So the day before the plan closes and the day after the plan closes, the, the plan is essentially the same. I mean, it's over time that that changes and the income stream that comes in goes down and the, and as a percentage of the outflows that go out. And so what generally has to happen is a de-risking of the investments. We can no longer match up inflows and outflows in the same level that we had, we came with the other two plans essentially. And the investments will have to become less aggressive in order to reduce the level of volatility that the plan can suffer when the market goes south, much as it did over the last quarter. So the timeframe, in, in the boards have adopted, or that the board has adopted a 10-year plan, I believe, and Patrick may have to help me on this, to reduce its assumed rate of return from down to at the end of 10 years, seven and a quarter. So over that period of time, moving the investments in that direction. The biggest challenge with doing that at this point in time is really, you know, you're, you're moving into an asset class that's extremely challenged right now, probably the single most overvalued asset class and has the most interest rate sensitivity at a time when interest rates are largely expected to rise. So the timing of that's been the issue. Once we see interest rates move up from where they are today, I think that the fixed income environment improves some and creates a much better opportunity for us to invest in. But until that happens, there is no immediate need to make those changes.
Nancy.
Well, my comment was related to that in a way. It just seemed, as I reviewed this, that when you combine the international and the domestic equity portions of the portfolio, it just seemed like the very risk-intensive portfolio. And these are retirement funds. So it was, I mean, like over 70%. You know, it's like, whoa. That seems like a high percentage.
For?
General employees, you're speaking of. Well, it's, it's general employees. When you add the two together, you're talking, what, 67%? There's 49 in 15, so you're talking 64%. I mean, it's a high, it just seemed like a high percentage of equity of a whole portfolio. Is that typical?
It is typical, yes. It's actually, I would say that if you looked across the state today, it would fall at least in the middle, if not on the lower side of that, yeah.
So you're, in comparison to other plans, this is a more?
Yeah, I would say that.
Conservative?
I would say it's at least average. Yeah.
Okay.
And part, and part of that's had to do with, with what's happened. Part of it's a natural function of the investments themselves. The equity market's done very well. The fixed income markets have not. And so the, the investments don't grow at the same speed. The second part of that has really been the fixed income side again. And one of the reasons that we included real estate in the plan, and one of the reasons that the real estate exposure is on the lower side is because it is less liquid. This, the general employees' plan has always been the most aggressive of the three as far as the asset allocation is concerned. It's actually moving in the other direction now, but it, it was always more heavily allocated. And I, you guys are, you guys are way ahead of me, but I have all this information in my presentation. I made all kinds of nice pie charts for you guys to look at. So I'm going to start going forward through these. And I think that some of this will be easier for me to, for you to see rather than for me to tell you. I spoke it out by managers. This is, we'll go through the general employee, or the police officers' plan first. General makeup of the overall plan on the left-hand side by manager on the right-hand side. I'm going to spend a ton of time on this because the slide that you guys are really going to want to see is next. But what I wanted to convey was that these really aren't static and we really don't just sit here and, and let the, the money ride. There are a lot of changes that have happened. It just takes a lot of time to implement these changes. Boards are very prudent in what they do. There's generally an education session that goes on if we have to make changes to documentation, investment policy, things like that. It could be manager interviews involved, could be contracts that have to be negotiated. And so it does take some time to make changes. But since, in this fiscal year, you can see at the bottom, Garcia-Hamilton Associates took over the fixed income responsibilities. We added another fixed income manager on the global side versus Templeton. And we've added real estate. ASB Real Estate Fund has, there's a brand new asset class. We didn't have a real estate manager before this. So two of these three asset classes are new. Garcia-Hamilton is taking over the fixed income responsibilities as of, I think, last quarter. So kind of the information I think you're looking for is on the next page. I went back to 2010. I wanted to kind of show you what these plans look like then versus what they look like today and kind of show you the difference in what's happened over the last five years. 2010, really for, for the general and the fire plan, really kind of had a single manager model. They had one firm that managed the entire pool of money. They had different international and domestic equity strategies and a fixed income strategy, but all of one firm. Today, you can see the difference on the right-hand side there. And we still have some assets with the manager, which was Highland Capital. And in those days, it was ICC Capital Management. But we've added ASB, Templeton, Garcia, Wells Fargo, and Dana and reduced the exposure to one single firm. What that does is it gives us hopefully better performance, but it gives us less dependence on one firm, one investment idea. And, and hopefully that helps. And I think you'll see that when we look at the performance that that's been a beneficial model.
Has that only been for the last year? One year?
This is over the last five years. The, the evolution from, from this, and when we go through the general plan, which is actually the last one, they didn't, they were actually larger five years ago. They didn't have a single manager model at that point in time. I think they did if you go way back. I didn't have clear data prior to that. I mean, one of the things that's, that's a little bit of an issue with the single manager model is to actually manage it in, in one portfolio. And so we could look from a, from an investment's perspective, we could look at how the overall plan did, but we couldn't look and say, your international manager is doing well, but your fixed income manager is terrible relative to what's in the marketplace because we didn't have that level of transparency. So those were all broken out into separate portfolios. So even if you had one manager, you had different portfolios to manage it in. And then the, the evolution from there has gone at different speeds for different plans. So you can see the, the firefighters' allocation. It's relatively similar to the police allocation. Some of the names are the same, some of the names are different. This is the smallest of the plans. And so from an investment standpoint, we use a mutual fund on the fixed income side versus a separate account, which would be the case for police and for the general employees, just because of diversification, liquidity, and cost associated with, with doing it that Get to page six. You can see the firefighters' plan 2010 versus 2015. This was actually the most concentrated plan in 2010 of the three, largely, I think, because it was the smallest during that point in time. But the, the board of the fire plan has been very aggressive in diversifying that out. And you can see the, the difference. We do have some exposure to Highland, but a very small piece of the overall plan. Have all the asset classes that the bigger plans have, exposure to real estate, global Added actually a separate mid-cap manager, which is small and mid companies, smaller companies than, than bigger companies. And so it probably has the most diversification of any of the plans at this point in time. The next plan is the general employees' plan. When you look at what's happened with this plan in the, the last couple of years, I think it kind of answered some of the questions that maybe we talked about already. They've made some transitions from where they were to where they are, added the new fixed income manager, added two new international managers to the portfolio. Like I said, this is the plan, and if you go forward one more page, that was the most diversified five years ago. And so when you look at the overall domestic equity allocation that this plan had in 2010, 65%, 52% today. So one of the keys isn't necessarily to take, we do over time want to reduce the amount of exposure that we have on the equity side. But as I said, that's a difficult decision to make today because of where else you have to put money. And we essentially have real estate, which is a liquid. That's not a great place to put money for a closed plan, at least in a high percentage. We have the fixed income markets, which are very susceptible to changes in interest rates and look extremely overvalued at this point in time. So in the meantime, what you can do is you can kind of spread that risk out. Look at different asset classes to asset classes that we've had recently. Equity exposure has come down to a certain extent. We have added real estate. We are looking at global fixed income in this point in time, but we've increased the number of, of buckets that we have, and I think we'll continue to do that. And then over time, as the market permits, we'll kind of continue to back that exposure down. At some point in time, it'll go, you know, seven and a quarter is, is the 10-year target for the expected rate of return. That's a temporary target as well. Over time, as, as this plan continues to see, have fewer and fewer active employees, that rate will continue to go down and down and down until essentially what we'll be managing is, is essentially cash. Because we'll have one retiree or two retirees or whatever at some point down the road. So it's really an evolutionary process, but it's essentially not as different today than it was when it closed a couple of years ago. Okay. The next part, plan returns. Did it in two different ways. Trailing returns show you one, three, five, and 10 years and how each plan is done relative to the median. Now, this is a median, not an average of these three plans, but it's actually a median of all public plans. Now, the, it's really just used for comparison purposes. They're all different sizes. They're all different kinds. Some are open, some are closed, some are police, fire, general employees. So it's not really an apples-to-apples, but it's a list of about several hundred plans that we use kind of as a, here's an idea of what the average plan is doing from a return standpoint. So you can see, as you go back in time, the most conservative plan, which was police, has, has had the lowest level of return. When you look at it on a calendar year basis, you can see why. It has to do with how many good years you've had and how many bad years you've had. It does better in bad years. It doesn't go up as fast in good years. The general employees' plan had the most diversification to begin with, had the most exposure to equities, really the opposite story. It goes up faster in good markets. It goes down faster in, in bad markets, at least it has historically. But over the last three to five years, which have been certainly better years in the equity markets than we've seen over the last 12 months, you can see returns are almost 9% for the five-year return for the general plan, almost 8% for the fire plan, and slightly less than 8% for the, the police plan. That puts them, you know, two of the three of those are above the median pretty substantially. And then on a calendar year basis, this is where you can kind of see the volatility and the effect that it takes on the overall return. If you look at years 2007 and 2008, 2007 was a very good year. 2008 was not a very good year in the market. The police plan, being more conservatively invested, was up less in 2007, 1338 versus 1489 and 1612. 2008 was a terrible year in the market. Police plan was only down slightly less than 11%. Fire was, was down about 12. And then general was, was down slightly more than 12. Median actually was about 13 and a half. and 2008, 2007 was a very good year. 2008 was not a very good year in the market. The police plan, being more conservatively invested, was up less in 2007, 1338 versus 1489 and 1612. 2008 was a terrible year in the market. Police plan was only down, slightly less than 11%. Fire was, was down about 12, and then general was, was down slightly more than 12. Median actually was about 13 and a half. So asset allocation is really what plays a big role in this. As, as the plans have changed and continue to diversify, I think you see those, the asset allocation becoming closer, and you also see the, the asset classes being used becoming more similar between plans, and I think the returns are becoming more similar as well. And then the, the last slide that I have. Obviously, this is not a great time to have a fiscal year-end. September 30th seems to be pretty unlucky from an investment perspective. The good news is that, the bad news doesn't seem to hang around. In, in what this, this chart hopes to identify is really kind of where we were September 30th, where we were on 930, and then where we were as of 109. Now, I know 109's a little bit old, but I had to send this over early. And the numbers haven't changed much since then. But as you can see, the market has a tendency to fall right into the September 30 year-end. It comes back almost immediately. And so values for the overall plan, in, in the case of general employees, it includes a city contribution, I believe, in that number. But for police and fire, numbers are very close to where they were at the June 30 year-end. So we'll go out this quarter and talk about how bad things are, and the reality is that they aren't still bad. And so if there's any good news to take from that is, is that, you know, things have kind of come back. And so even, even when Patrick does the valuation, it's going to be as a 930 fiscal year-end. The planes are actually, have values that are going to be much higher than that, I think, by the time you actually see those.
Very good. Any questions? Yes, Tom?
Jack, I would like to commend you for your work over the years in, in suggesting to the pension boards that they bring in the different managers to diversify the funds. And also, the pension boards, I think, have done a wonderful job in conjunction with, with you in reviewing all of these different components. And you've done a good job, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
We have several committee members. Thank you.
Thanks very much. The meetings are quite long. I think in some times, we, we go through a lot of material, but we, we make a lot of progress. I think we have certainly laid.
Yes, Rachel?
As far as this year's return, was one area dog, or were they all bad? I mean, did we have one major problem, or it was just?
The reality is that when you have markets like we had in, in the, in the fiscal fourth quarter, calendar third quarter, people don't like stocks. It's not, they don't like that stock, but they like this stock. So everything goes down. There's what's called a de-risking of the overall portfolio. And so you see people step back. If you're in international stock, you sell those, and you buy domestic stocks. And if you, if you don't like stocks, then you back up and you buy bonds. And so international and small companies did worse. Equities did worse than fixed income. Everything kind of goes down together. And so there's some variation in the, in the returns for the plans. It looks like the numbers are going to be around negative one to positive one. Now, the good news there is that we do the four-year smooth, and so this is a quarter of the overall result. The other good news there is that the, this is becoming the, the fourth year that's going to fall off as a terrible year. And so I think the impact overall for plans that I've seen is going to be negligible as far as the four-year smooth return is going to be. So that's actually good news. And the fact that we've kind of gotten started on, on a good foot this quarter is good news as well, because the return that we have next year is very large. So we need all the benefit from this year that we can get going forward. So there wasn't anything in particular about, in any of the three plans that was particularly better or worse than the other. Police had a little more exposure to the value side. Now, not to be too technical, but when you look at stocks, some stocks are growth stocks, some stocks are value. A growth company is, is a company that rewards its shareholders through appreciation. They take the money that they earn, they invest it back in the business, generally technology. It can be consumer discretionary, things that you don't have to have today. Value companies are traditionally things that you can't postpone the purchase of. Energy, healthcare, consumer staples like grocery stores and things like that. Those companies generally pay a dividend. They don't really have a lot more of their business that they want to grow, so they pay their shareholders back in, in terms of a dividend. Having exposure to the value side has been, over time, a smoother, a little bit of a smoother ride because of the high income stream that comes in. More recently, it hasn't been the place to be in the market over the last 12 months. The growth side has done much better. As, I don't know if you've heard, the market has kind of narrowed, and you've got companies like Apple, and, and a very small number of kind of techie companies have driven returns of the S and P and things like that. Value managers don't have big exposures to those. And so the police plan is a little bit overweight towards the value side. That hurt their results for the fiscal year. Over the long term, that's, that's not a new position for them. They're actually kind of moved off that a little bit from where they used to be. Historically, they were all value. So, so that was the biggest driver, I think, for the difference between their return and the return for the other plans in the fiscal year.
So, Jack, is Garcia fixed income?
Yes.
Still living up to your expectations?
Yes. They've, they've only been in there a short time. They, I believe, are the fixed income manager of the year for the last two consecutive years. They may be as good a fixed income manager as there is in the country. The, the downside to them, what they do is they, they have a very active style. They don't buy bonds and wait till they mature. They move around in the portfolio very quickly. And one of the things that they do is maintain access to lots of liquid assets. They don't buy things that they can't trade out of. So they have a lot of treasury exposure. They have a lot of high-quality corporate bond exposure. And they do adjust the duration of the portfolio, which, which impacts the interest rate sensitivity. Two quarters ago was not a great quarter for them. Interest rates rose. They were actually more exposed to changes in interest rates, and so they went down. Last quarter was a much better quarter for them because interest rates actually fell again, and they, they have a quarter like that every once in a while. But overall, they add a tremendous amount of value. So yes, very much so.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Yes, Tom?
If we could, I'd like to have Howard comment on the, on the general progress or state of the pension funds that we've, we've experienced over the past couple of years, and just to outline the different things that have happened to have improved some of the expectations. You can talk about the contract negotiations and just all of the things that have had an impact.
Well, we, in all of the plans, we have made some changes. Some of them have been more significant than others. Take the general employees' plan. We closed the plan a few years ago. That's a major, major change. All the new employees, for several years now, are not in the defined benefit plan. They're in a defined contribution, which has no liability for the city once they retire. They, whatever they earn is theirs to take. So, and the general employees are still, the ones that are in the defined benefit plan are still kicking in 8.1%. So that plan, over time, has, as you can see, the amount of dollars that the city has to put into that plan, assuming that the investments still do okay and, you know, nothing dramatic changes, will go down. On the fire side, we've increased their employee contribution to nine and a half percent. And with the new contract, they do not get paid a 0.5% lump sum payment anymore. That's gone away. New employees only get a multiplier of 3%. Current employees kick in 9.5% and still retain a 3.5% multiplier. So as new employees come onto the fire, now you don't have very many there. You don't have a large turnover. But that plan went from in the 60%, 65% funded liability, now they're in the 80s. So you could see the change that occurred. Now, that could switch again, but we monitor that each year. With police, the new employees, again, only a 3% multiplier. The current employees are kicking in 8%. Now, we have another contract negotiation coming up. And, but the police plan has always been the plan that is well-funded over the years. Their demographics or whatever, they've always been around 90% funded ratio, which is still very good. And as far as investment returns, the pension boards have reduced their goal from 8% to 7.75, and they may have to make other adjustments in the future. But again, when you look at these statistics, when you are over 80...